The others showing up. I did not grab an agenda. I won't go back. I love you guys. All right, so review of of agenda and then communications. Do we have training today? That was last week. Okay, well, this will be quick then. Uh, any comments, questions, considerations on the minutes?
One of these days I'm gonna find something. Well, I'm gonna specifically.
Yeah, how nitpicky do we wanna be? Uh, the copper rim phase nine is being continued. Uh, and then text amendment for the tree canopies. Isaac Astle? Do we wanna?
Yeah, it it would probably be good. Um, we don't expect a lot of uh, public comment, but it is obviously notices a public hearing, but we've got Alan Anderson. This so this was a council initiated uh, text amendment. So that's why we have uh, Alan Anderson here, but Isaac Astle, he's he's a department director for public services. And uh, so kind of our resident expert, if you've got any detailed questions. If you wanna ask them at the pre-meeting, that'd be great. If not, um, just for efficiency and to your point, Chair, we've got, we've got the time, so.
Yeah, I think so too. You wanna just come up and share the, what it is we're looking in? I know, right? Tell us what a foot is going to do for us.
There we go. Currently, our our urban forester, I think it was five or six years ago, uh, got approval to raise it to fifteen feet. The thinking behind that is UDOT's requirement is fourteen feet, five, or fourteen feet, six inches on UDOT roads. And our roads are obviously narrower than the arterials for the most part, and so fifteen feet allowed us uh, some wiggle room. So if there was snow or rain on uh, vegetation, obviously, there's a a lot of drooping. And we've had a lot of issues over the years with our uh, city equipment. Low cost issues, but for the most part, like our sweeper, when it's going down the road, we have to pull off to the side and wait for the car to come the other way so we can make it around where a tree is lo- down lower. Um, the council had a discussion several of weeks ago that they would like it that to be lowered because there were some concerns brought up from residents in residential areas that they received notices that their trees didn't meet the standard. And so that that's where the uh, conversation went to. As staff, we would prefer to have it as high as possible, but totally understand where the elected officials are coming from and that that there's, there's a balance there that we've gotta meet the 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 residents' needs and wants as well as our operational needs and wants. I don't think there's much more that I could say other than that.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
The garbage trucks. Do they fit through there at fourteen feet or?
So most of our, the highest truck we have is eleven feet, eight inches. The the highest vehicle that we own is eleven feet, eight inches.
Okay.
But that's.
Cause that was one of my concerns when I was going through that and I just wanted to make sure that was not gonna become an issue.
No, and that there was, I I should say, there was, there was a stud, I'm sorry, the fire trucks are twelve feet. Public services, we we do have, I'm sorry, we we have a twelve foot, ten inch vehicle and Public Works has a thirteen foot, six inch vehicle. And then the police command center is fifteen feet tall. So there are, there is one that's over the fourteen foot.
Well, hopefully that doesn't have to go down that street.
Yeah. But with that said, on a regular basis, the issue is more when there's precipitation. You know, if if the standard is at fourteen feet, when it's, snows or rains, depending on the the width of a tree, then you know, you've got drooping. But other than that, I don't disagree with, you know, as staff, we don't disagree with what the council's looking to find a balance.
I would think the snow plows and the garbage trucks are probably the vehicles that are going through the neighborhoods the most.
Yeah, yeah, and we have issues all the time, you know, we 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 brush them or we have to pull over to let vehicles get by because there's a car parked on the side of the road and then things like that, but.
So for those a handful of people that did, this is a loaded question. I'm sorry. For those handful of people that did, in fact, uh, contact the the council, I can't imagine that they were at fourteen feet and they got a citation or a notice saying, hey, you gotta trim that up another foot. They were probably down closer to, much lower than the fourteen feet. At what point do we start actually noticing noticing people and saying, hey, it's time to trim it up?
I would have to refer to Scott on that for code enforcement. I I can tell you that the study was done on how how much damage has happened. And most of the damage happened around nine feet, nine to ten feet in height. So lowering from fifteen to fourteen feet, that where the normal damage is happening is still way lower than that. I'll let Scott talk about the code enforcement side of that, but there there's some challenges throughout the city for tree height.
So most, most of the enforcement uh, has come about just in in working with our 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 city crews. When they have a a a street project, they'll go out ahead and and say, okay, we're we're gonna be uh, redoing this road, um, and and uh, code will get a list of of properties that need to be noticed. Mayor Burton's worked really hard to soften the approach uh, when it comes to code enforcement. We'll give a courtesy notice, wait at least two weeks, follow up and and see if if things have been done. If if uh, not, then then they will get their notice of violation. And give them another two weeks to come into compliance and then only after that are we looking at any citations um, and and fines and things like that, so. Just for context, when they do go out and when the officers do go out and measure height, um, they have a pole. And they they, you know, it's it's a fifteen foot pole and they they go along and and uh, it's not a magical spot somewhere on the pavement or the gutter pan. It's just they they put that pole down and if if a branch happens to go down, the 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 good thing that with the the current code is that they do have some wiggle room and some discretion. They're not gonna flag a property if they're an inch or two below. Usually, it's it's six inches plus. And uh, and so there there's some leeway. The they're gonna have less leeway the shorter that that height because we're gonna be knocking more more branches and I don't know if that answers your question or?
No, it it does. I'm I'm, I guess I'm kinda curious for these handful of people that uh, that were complaining and I'm sure there's a lot more that could be if we were going out and communicating with everyone, but I, is the foot really making that much of a difference for for these folks? And I I I think for areas where we have a lot more mature trees, they're they're wider, they reach out to the street more. That's when the precipitation really brings them down. You can't have three to five feet really where that's drooping as a result if they're out too far, so.
Question. So it seems counterintuitive if they're being cited because their trees are too low and we're dropping it from fifteen to fourteen, there's going to be more upset residents because now they have to trim them even more than they would have had to normally. It it, I, one foot, just, it just doesn't feel like that's big of a deal. Like, I don't see why we would need to re-change everything for a foot. It just seems like it's not meeting the purpose. Maybe Alan, you can speak to that? I don't know. But it just feels like if they're, they're getting cited because it's too low, it's because it's nine feet. And if we make it fourteen feet, then they'll get, it just. Yeah, they'll still get cited.
I I don't wanna speak for code enforcement, it's not in my, it's not in my lane. If I can use that pun. The, it it is correct that there were residents that communicated to the city council. There was also, um, I'm sorry, let me finish that thought. There were residents that had contacted the city council about the height when the height was at fifteen feet. I do believe um, that it's they they get the code enforcement when it's, like you said, greater than a foot difference from what the standard is. However, what I wanna mention in the code is the current code thirteen 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 ten talks about measuring in travel lanes and parking lanes, the height, and the roads have a have a crown to them. And so the council thought if we go to fourteen feet, let's just come up with a with a standard so that it's fourteen feet no matter where it is, whether you measure from the interface with the concrete curb and the asphalt or you're at the crown of the road, that you still have that fourteen feet. It was discussed pretty intently uh, at council meeting about uh, trees drooping when it's snowing or when they have uh, water on them, and I think I think there's a sensitivity from the mayor's office that we're not measuring when trees are drooping weight from water and snow. Um, so the code not just, doesn't just change it from fifteen feet to fourteen feet, it talks about the fourteen feet above the street surface is continuous for the width of travel lanes and parking lanes. So if you're parking on the side of the street, it's still fourteen feet. If you're traveling down the middle of the road on the crown of the road, it's still fourteen, fourteen feet. So we we have cleaned up some of that language so that there's a consistency, still allows some flexibility, but kind of fixes that height um, issue. The one thing I did wanna mention that's in the staff report is um, there's various cities that were data was compiled. And many of them are thirteen and a half feet, twelve feet. Uh, Riverton does have fifteen feet. Salt Lake City, Sandy are fourteen feet. West Valley is fourteen feet. Uh, Bannifield's eleven feet. Centerville Farmington thirteen feet. American Fork is eight feet. Yeah. Um, and so, you know, there's varying heights and we did validate that with the fleet and the different department heads on the height of our largest vehicles, the fire department, it's the what do they call that? The ladder truck. The articulated one, that's the the biggest one, it's I think thirteen feet tall. So this still meets um, all the height restrictions that we, or height requirements that we have with our city vehicles. And Mr. Astle is correct that most of the damage, when I talk to risk, is uh, at the eight to ten foot level, side mirrors, um, so some of those kind of things where the damage has occurred to city vehicles. The one thing that I did mention to the city council is the street sweepers because those get pretty close, they're within about uh, twelve to eighteen inches from the curb as they're going down the street, but the the tallest height of those vehicles, or not of a Public Works vehicle is thirteen feet, six inches. So. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Alan. I was, I was waiting for 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 uh, our chair to acknowledge, but you were walking away, so I just grabbed you. Okay, so I walked in a few minutes late. I I don't, I I miss the part where the, what are the residents complaining about? I'm just, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around this need for a change in ordinance when staff seems to be very much opposed to it. There doesn't seem to be a need for it and there's a couple of people making waves about it, so we're gonna lower the threshold? It just, none of this makes sense to me. So I'm 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 just trying to like wrap my head around this whole thing, listening to you and Isaac, listening and trying to read through the note, the the notes. I'm confused. Someone's gonna have to make me believe that this is worth everybody's time. Like, I feel bad, staff's already wasted their time doing this. But quite honestly, someone's gonna have to convince me otherwise.
No, I can appreciate that. All I can tell you is that residents had communicated to the council, I believe it was through code enforcement and some citations that they had received. Uh, the council brought it up for a discussion. They heard from uh, the department heads, they heard from the forester, urban forester. Um, they got the data from Public Works, from Fleet. They received accident reports from um, risk management of the city. Uh, we looked at all of the accidents that are, I shouldn't say accident, we looked at all the damage to the city vehicles. And the majority of the council feels that moving to fourteen feet is an appropriate code change as well as cleaning up some sections of code, so we have consistent measuring.
Hold on, I thought I read in the packet that the council was unanimous and as you just said, that most of them feel that way. Can you clarify for me if that's a unanimous decision or if that's a, most of them feel that way decision?
I'm pulling from my memory, so I would need to.
I got a question that kinda goes along with that.
It says, it says in the general information, the city council, by unanimous voters requesting, I I know that it's not that case, but.
Yeah, I'll I'll look in preparation for six o'clock and get that answer. In the city, in this form of government, well, any any city with a legislative body, it only takes four council members.
I I get, I get that, the majority rules, but you know, we're claiming it's unanimous, but it's not, and your recollection is that it's not.
I will go and look.
Okay. I I'm just having a really hard time thinking. I I mean, I'm looking at my tree, it's a garbage tree in the front yard of my house, I haven't had a chance to cut down yet. But when it snows and the branches droop down, guess what? I just go out and cut them down because I don't wanna walk underneath them. I think that this is just, this is just dumb. Honestly, it's just silly to me. That's just my feeling on it. I'll get off my soapbox because we're gonna have to have another conversation in a few minutes about this.
Nope, that's okay. And uh, just so you know, my, I do not have any trees in my park strip there on my property because I don't wanna go out and cut them.
Mine's on my property, that's.
One, one more quick question, this kinda goes along with Commissioner Quinney, is if we cleaned up the language and left it at fifteen, what is your impression of the city council's view on that? Maybe you can kinda get back with us on that at six. I know that's a loaded question.
That's a loaded question, I may not have an answer for that.
And that's fine. I just, I'm kinda along with uh, Commissioner Quinney, it's like, why change things, but if we need to tweak it a little bit to make it sound better, I, I'm okay with that, but.
Yeah, one one more piece of homework for you in the thirteen minutes. I don't see it in here. Do we have like the 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 actual written opinion of our city arborist? I'd be interested if we could have that as part of our.
I'll look up the minutes from the council meeting where he spoke and I'll read those to you.
I'm I'm even more, I'm even more confused by this than Matt. I I I'm not, what problem are we solving? Is anybody solving by dropping us to fourteen feet? I'm not, I I haven't heard what the problem is, or at least I don't understand it.
All all I can tell you is the residents had communicated with the city council about a concern with it being at fifteen feet on their maintenance of their trees, their privately owned trees. City council discussed it in a public meeting and the majority for, at least four, I'll find out the correct answer at six. At least four felt that moving to fourteen feet would be in the best interest of the city. There was discussions made, if I remember correctly, um, that, you know, damage to the vehicles, uh, risk coldest damage to the vehicles was between eight and ten feet. Going from fifteen to fourteen doesn't change that because it's things like side mirrors. And that's, that's how I would answer your question.
The tree limbs lower, there's gonna be less damage to vehicles?
I don't know that it would be less damage. I don't think changing it from fifteen to fourteen is gonna eliminate the damage to city vehicles when they occur between eight and ten.
Still confused, sorry.
All right, one more question, and I'm gonna get off of that soapbox. Help me understand the difference between pavement and surface and why that particular word changes the context of this.
For that, I'm gonna let Duncan speak to it. He's the attorney.
I want you up here.
That's fine, I'm not an attorney. But you have, but you, before he starts, you do have, roads are crowned so that the water can run off for for safety purposes. Um, oh, thank you. So this, this would kind of show the the fourteen feet with the box truck uh, in a travel lane. You can kinda see where the box truck and the Jeep or Bronco is. Uh, you can kinda see it tilt with the crown of the road. Uh, the code was kind of uh, didn't really, the the current code before this didn't really clarify where the measuring point was because it talked just parking lane and travel lane. Um, so if I take it at the parking lane and it's fifteen feet, but I go to the crown, which is elevated and it's not fifteen feet, oh, and now I can, now I can issue a citation or I can, I can do something like that. So this clarifies that in addition to changing it to fourteen feet.
So I'm curious to hear what Duncan, here here's my thought on that really quick. I don't see any of our code enforcement officers standing in the middle of the street at the crown and then I don't know, pulling out a step stool and eyeballing from that fifteen foot across, they're right underneath the tree. So Duncan, what's the difference between pavement and surface?
Well, let me start with this first, my starting point, then remind me to answer your question. My starting point first and foremost, unless you forget. My my starting point was two things. One, what the council said, and secondly, trying to at least come up with one common term between the two parts in the ordinance, because one of the sections said street surface and the other one said pavement surface. And I figured, you know, at a minimum, we just gotta have the same term, right? And uh, and it appeared that street surface was there more frequently. And my thought was, in theory, not every street is paved, right? I mean, if it's a gravel street or dirt street, though we don't really have many of those, then then it's just the street surface, whatever it is, right? It seems to be the most universal term. The other thing is what the council said, and the council said they wanted to, and they left it up to staff and I to basically just gives, they wanted to give staff the ability and then, you know, me the ability to draft it for them uh, so that they could measure anywhere on the street surface as was just stated, like at the crown of the road or on the by the curb and gutter or somewhere in between, that no matter where they measured, that it could be, you know, it would be the same fourteen feet. The idea being that everybody knows the crown of the street is much higher, right, than the edge of the street. And um, and so obviously, you know, it ought to be able to be at least the fourteen feet all the way through. So basically, I took my guidance from what the council wanted, um, and um, you know, having uniform, a uniform term all the way through and the one that seemed to be the most universal. And then I carried it through to on the one section where it's talking about over the sidewalk. Uh, the same thing, right? The whole length of the uh, the sidewalk, it's eight feet. Now, obviously, not many uh, sidewalks are tilted from left to right as you're walking on them, but I figured, well, just keep the same, you know, if it's and it's not so much that maybe the surface of the sidewalk is tilted, but maybe the, you know, the tree, I don't know, is is curved up is or whatever, but. So and just to keep again, the language, you know, for, universal and uniform. So your main question was, um, what's the difference between street surface and paved surface? And I think I may have answered that as I was going through, that I was just trying to, just in case all of our streets have street surface, maybe not all of our streets have a paved surface, and I was trying to catch all of the streets. Even though I I can't even think of one street that's not paved, but just where I live out in the current, in the country in Western Weaver County, there's all kinds of roads that don't have a paved surface, so just came to my mind, but. All right, so I probably answered your question plus much more.
You did, and that was perfect. So uh, can we get the the uh?
That language back up on the screen?
I just wanted to double, so what I was thinking is, rather than saying, I I I'm, if we're gonna make changes, I wanna ensure consistency. And so it seems to me that we should be uh, stating that we will measure the point where the tree is vertically distant from the surface. So it's not some random part or any, we can pick any part, it's gotta be vertical from wherever that point is straight up. Does that make sense? So we couldn't pick the crown unless that's where the tree branch is.
Right, so you would, you wanna a straight up, some term that makes it clear that it's a straight up vertical measurement, right?
Measured vertically.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's probably some language that could be put in, that's a good catch.
That reflects our current practice, right? That, you know, that last exhibit shows pretty perfect trees that go up. That's not reality, right? There are branches that sometimes do this and, and so while that's the the exception, our officers have had situations where they'll go out and put that pole and they'll slide it and keep that pole vertical, right? And it'll knock, a- as you get further into the travel lane, it's more important to maintain that that clear, because you're gonna be hitting Amazon trucks and whatever, right, so. Before we end though, Chair, uh, Isaac did have some other things to say, not.
That's great. Commissioner Quinney's got one other question, yes, we do wanna hear.
And I do have an idea where to put the word. It could be right afterward where it says fourteen feet and before the word above, just put the word vertically. So it would read fourteen feet vertically above the street and then that.
Vertically or something, yeah.
Yeah, and then you wouldn't have to keep saying that word vertically all throughout the rest because it it applies all the way through. So that could just, that one word, I think, would maybe catch it all.
Right, and what I like about that or what I'm thinking about that is if if we are nitpicking literally over a foot difference on this, then I I don't want us to have somebody come out and say, well, it's it's fourteen feet over here, now we slide three feet over this way and we're saying it's thirteen because of the the bend on the bow. It's gotta be exact, so. Uh, Commissioner Quinney?
Uh, just a little bit more homework for Alan. You ready?
I'm listening.
So I'm looking at these uh, these uh, criteria that we're supposed to 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 make sure that meet the findings here. Just a little bit of idea, come on, I was stuck again. Hold on. There we go. So uh, the proposed amendment is appropriate given the context and require, the request is sufficient justification. I wanna know, like, who actually made this motion? Because if the council's not unanimous, I'm curious as to who's making this motion and maybe why. Uh, the other part is that you said a few residents made comments and came and complained. So it, to me, that doesn't seem to match with criteria four where it makes a modification for a few people. Right, we're supposed to make sure that these modifications are to benefit of the whole city and we have a few people making a request? It just seems like we're almost making favors. So I'd just like to be, I'd be interested to see, you know, how many people are making this request that are residents and who's making the request on behalf of the city council.
So to answer, to answer your question, there wasn't a formal motion because it was done in a committee of the whole, and I've just been reading the minutes and there was no opposition to bringing the code amendment back from any council member. So that, that's that question, uh, remind me your second question. It was, it was two residents that emailed the council about the tree height.
So two residents made a request and were making a modification to the entire code that will have applicability to the entire city that's going to have negative impact on this staff for two people.
But there were, what was it, Scott, eight or nine hundred people that got notices for trees. I think a lot of them were.
Yeah, it was about seven hundred and fifty uh, over this last year. Again, that was due to street projects, right? They go in advance of of the street work and uh, and then they, they ask our code enforcement officers to to provide that notice. So there there was a lot of notices, not a lot of citations, but uh, out of those, uh, it sounds like a couple people reached out to their elected officials. Seven hundred and fifty people, two complained. And we're changing code. Thank you.
I would be curious of those seven hundred and fifty, how many of them would still be impacted by the fourteen feet over the fifteen feet? We have literally two minutes. Isaac, did you wanna talk about that or do you wanna wait until the whole meeting? Please do.
And I I apologize if it came off this way. I don't, I don't want it to sound like that staff are opposing this change. My intent upfront was to tell you how we got to, where we came from the fifteen feet, not that we're opposing changing it to fourteen feet. But I also understand that there's a lot of uh, requests and challenges that we try to meet the best need for the city. But that's, just wanna clarify that we're not opposing uh, this.
Much appreciated, and I think we've all reviewed the packet and come prepared to have the same conversation. Thank you. You know what, it is, all right, it's almost, I think we'll just hang on and I'll All right, we'd like to call to order the March seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Western Planning Commission. Uh, all commissioners are currently present because we're missing one, right? Okay, we're good. We will start the meeting by looking at the consent calendar uh, for approved the minutes. Do we have a motion or discussion? Commissioner Thomas?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from last meeting.
And Commissioner Hatch?
I'll second.
Thank you, I called you both out of order, but first by, or a motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Hatch, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Under public hearings, the copper rim phase nine uh, is to be continued until the March twenty.
uh, is to be continued until the March twenty-first. I guess it's right here. There we are. To be continued in March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, so.
Is that continuing the public hearing also?
Uh, that also, yes. Uh, do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion or discussion? Commissioner Quinney?
I move that we, uh, I mo- I move, move that we move this item to the March twenty-first meeting.
And Commissioner Thomas?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Quinney, second by Commissioner Thomas, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number three, text amendment, tree canopies to amend the two thousand nine West Jordan City Code, sections thirteen thirteen ten and thirteen eighteen ten regarding tree canopy height requirement, citywide applicability with city of West Jordan being the applicant. Uh, we've already heard from Isaac. Do we want to, uh, who, who would we like to have its staff share this information?
So I'll go really quickly. Um, so this is a, a amendment to the ordinance that will change the tree, minimum tree height from fifteen feet to fourteen feet. On this illustration, um, this illustrates how trees would be pruned and it was kind of a, a quiz on the sides you can see in the blue circles. That's, those trees would need to be pruned. However, that is where most of the damage to city vehicles is occurring is the closer you get, uh, to the gutter pan. Um, and we, Duncan has taken down notes on the changes you want in the uh, two ordinance sections. And other than that, I think enough discussion was made in the pre-meeting over this. Unless you have any questions for me, Alan, Duncan, Isaac, Scott, or Julie, then we'll be happy to answer them.
I think there were a handful of questions that, uh, Alan was going to get back to us on. Have you had enough time or did you already answer those?
I didn't have time to watch the video. But what I will tell you is that the committee of the whole meeting, um, they don't, uh, they don't vote, uh, take action at a committee of the whole, but they do find consensus. And in the minutes, the, the official minutes for that meeting, which was December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, um, council members Worthy and Bloom requested this item on the agenda. Council member Worthy referred to a previous council discussion regarding tree clearance height. Council members Worthy, Whitelock, Bloom, Pack, and Green expressed support. Council member McConaughey express, express opposition, said he preferred fifteen feet because of U dot standards. U dot standard for an oversized vehicle is fourteen feet, six inches. Um, I talked about the code and where the, the difference in the measuring was. Mr. Astle commented the same, that some cities provided notice of non-compliance and gave a timeframe for the property owner to take care of the problem, which is what we do. They get, that's what we refer to with the, the notice and they have a timeframe to correct that. Um, council member Pack said he believed code enforcement needed to have a balance to be both poignant and respectful. Council member McConaughey suggested property owners be allowed to provide a pruning schedule showing city would be met over time to avoid causing damage to trees by removing too much at once. That was one of the comments the forester said. The other thing, uh, the forester indicated is that, um, there are trees that are approved by the city that grow more columnar. Um, and people plant trees that don't go columnar, I guess is what I would say. Uh, Mr. Wall, who was the city attorney at the time, he suggested that the measuring applies to any part of the pavement, uh, from which, in which the tree hangs. And seeing no objection from the council, Chair Whitelock requested staff to make the addition of the suggested language. Mr. Lee suggested the intent was fourteen feet above any portion of the parking lane or travel lanes, uh, just for clarity. So unless you give me time to watch the video.
All right. Any further questions for staff? Commissioner, when?
I think it would be beneficial for the public record for the, for somebody to state once again what problems are being solved by this text amendment.
Um, the problems that are being solved are two residents brought the issue to the city council as a legislative body who oversees the code. And the majority of the city council, um, it was not unanimous. The majority of the city council, at least five members indicated support for changing it to fourteen feet. Still provides opportunity for code enforcement to, um, give time for a property owner to comply. Um, it also, you know, there's things we could probably do to promote the proper type of tree that, uh, doesn't need that kind of pruning. Um, but that's, that's what I would say as an answer to your question.
And what were the specific concerns of those two citizens?
The two citizens, uh, received citations for their trees lower than fifteen feet. If I remember correctly.
How much lower than fifteen feet were the trees?
I've not seen the citation, so that I don't know.
Alan, wasn't some of the discussion also that somebody had done an informal study? And it appeared that we were on the higher end compared to most cities and fourteen feet seemed to be more of a, uh, community standard?
Yes, there's only one city that's at fifteen feet. Everyone else is less than fifteen feet. Some as low as eight feet for Tree City, USA, American Fork.
All right. Any further questions for staff? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, this has been noticed as a public hearing, so we will now open it up for a public hearing. Uh, please, uh, feel free to come up. We have three minutes to, uh, address. Please state your name for the record.
It takes me three minutes to stop mumbling, so if this may go longer. Paul Brock, big fire marshal. Uh, the fire code does have a provision that any canopies, overhangs, things like that, of which trees would fall into that. Can't be any lower than thirteen foot six. Uh, fourteen feet, of course, meets that, that requirement. Uh, when I first came on as a, a young firefighter, um, the, the tree standard was much lower. And so consequently, the sides of our ambulances and engines were all scratched up and stuff, and we would spend hours and hours out with buffers trying to get those scratches out of it and stuff. So I applaud that they are higher than our, our fire engines, our fire apparatuses, apparatus, something like that and stuff. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else like to, uh, care to come up? Julie, do we have anybody online? All right. Well, we will close this portion of the, uh, well, close this public hearing and move this item back to the planning commission. Um, I'll share my thought is that I think it is kind of silly to move this. Uh, I think we stick with fifteen feet. I think that, uh, just because everyone else has something lower, you know what? It works for us. The lowest, uh, piece of, or the highest piece of equipment we have is fifteen feet with the police vehicle. It makes sense. Uh, also with, uh, the weight from snow and rain and moisture in general, even at fifteen feet, we're still getting down into that thirteen and a half easily on some of these trees. So that's my thought. If anybody else wants to weigh in or provide a motion. Commissioner Quinney? Uh, I agree. Uh, I think that, uh, looking at the criteria, one and three, whatever, they're fine. Uh, two, I just don't see any sufficient justification for this. And that's mostly because I think that the criteria four is not met simply because we're making a modification based on the request of two individuals who received citations. Sounds to me like sour grapes. Sounds to me like just get on board. Um, we shouldn't be making changes citywide because two people made a request. We've got evidence and testimony from several members of our staff about the size and, and, and height of our vehicles. I'd much rather not spend, have our firefighters spending time buffing out their trucks I, when we don't need to. So, I mean, I, I just see absolutely no reason to do this. And I'll make a motion when, when we're all done taking our turns, taking shots at this. He's already, uh, called. Uh, Duncan, you, you beeped in there. Did you want to?
Yeah, just two things real quick. Uh, first of all, I think that's great that you're using the criteria in your deliberation. That's, that's just awesome. Uh, second thing, I did a little more, uh, looking at the words, um, vertical, I would probably recommend gravitationally vertical. Uh, so that's definitely like straight up as opposed to kind of not quite straight up if you're on a slightly curved street. Um, and then lastly, I guess maybe a third thing is that regardless of what you pick for your number, whether it's fourteen or fifteen, I'd still would recommend that you keep the other changes. Some of them were just changing words to make them uniform with the rest of the code. And I, I think the blue that you have on the screen is helpful that for staff that they can measure it anywhere along the whole length, whatever the height might be. So anyway, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatch?
So I, I find it interesting that two residents were cited because their trees were too low, so the council decided to lower the height. It, again, it just seems very counterintuitive. I will have to also feel that this is silly. So, um, much ado about nothing is what I would say. So, thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
And I would agree with the fifteen foot also. However, I do agree that we should clean up the language. And whoever does the motion, um, if they'll just add that into it, I think, uh, there we go.
Yep, agreed with the, the gravitational velocities. And, uh, is that right? Gravitational velocity? Is that the wording we decided?
So gravitationally vertical?
Sorry.
And, and maybe the.
So far off today.
And if, if I throw out enough words, I can really confuse you, huh? And then the easiest way to make the, the motion, if, if it, you're leaning towards keeping all the changes that are proposed is just say that you're making the motion to, uh, uh, approve the, uh, recommended language except for all references to, to fourteen being fifteen. And then it's clear what it is you're doing.
Any further, uh, discussion? Duncan, you've got all the rest of the notes that we've talked about as far as the gravitationally vertical challenge, whatever, whatever weird words. Julie's got them, I'm sure.
Yeah. Well, so, I mean, you could just include it in your motion that, I mean, it, it sounds like what you're saying is you want to adopt the, or you want to recommend these proposed changes to the council with two changes, one being references. Uh, you want to keep the reference of fourteen feet at fifteen. And after the, the, uh, places where it says fourteen feet, you want to add the words gravitationally vertical immediately after and before the word above.
Gravitationally vertical. Got it. Are we ready?
Motioned by Duncan.
Are we ready? Are we ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, well, Julie, you're gonna help me remember these words in a minute. Sorry to hurt the, the train of thought. Um, I just wanted to comment briefly on, uh, I, I've, I've attended a lot of the, the council meetings, council discussion. If you can go back to the, uh, other exhibit, Larry, with the trees. So if, uh, this, this is good to, to kind of play out. Um, if you were, if you were to take that, that red line, um, that shows fourteen feet, if, and move it up a foot, that would clip more branches. And so, and so by reducing it a foot, it actually reduces the number of notices of violation potentially. And so it, potentially less complaints and things like that. So, um, now it, to your point, Commissioner Hatch, it, it potentially puts more vehicles in harm's way. But we would get probably less, uh, code issues if, if they moved the line. Just wanted to put that out there. So, so counterargument to that point right there. If two people complained about raising the speed limit, we'd get far fewer speeding tickets. But that still doesn't make it better, right? Just by raising the speed limit. So I, I just, yeah. I, I, I'm, I'm just kind of pointing out, I, I see your point on there. I just don't see, I just don't see the, the need. We've already got a, we've already got an expectation. We shouldn't lower our, our expectation just so that we can make more people happy. Just meet the expectation. Right? There's a hundred and how many thousand people live in the city? Let's just, let's just live to the expectation. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and move that we, uh, uh, forward this recommendation to the city council. As a positive recommendation, except that we're going to leave the, uh, the height limit at fifteen feet, scratching out fourteen feet. And after fifteen feet, putting in the words gravitationally vertical. Did I get those right? Okay. Got it. There we go. All right. Motion by Commissioner Quinney, Commissioner Thomas?
And I will second that.
And a second by Commissioner Thomas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That was the last item on our agenda.
I moved to adjourn.
And we are adjourned.